Official newspapers will be able to announce it, the Daily Record, Smaller than January 8th, 2025. And was posted on the Volition Board in the Municipal Billam on January 8th, 2025. And has been continuously posted as required by the citizens and the statute. In addition, property this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the municipal clerk.
With the township's will regarding rules of the day, proceedings of the council shall be governed by Robert's rules of order. Please silence all cell phones. Proper notice having been given, township clerk is the record to make this statement in the next minute.
Hold up.
This is the real here. Mr. Scholz.
Here.
This is Senator here. This President Hayes.
Yeah.
President Vermont.
Yeah.
And Sadeau.
Here.
Let the record reflect that following members of the administration are present. The mayor, Arable Susan, administrator of the mill.
We do sweep from the flag and followed by a moment of silence. But we give this to the flag of the United States of America. And as a republic, for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we'll start with the first presentation in the open office for the chairman and the winner for our five company number two.
Come on up. There he is. Well, for people in the audience, it's always a great occasion when we get very new firefighter here in Jefferson Township. I thank the council for allowing us to do that at their meetings. Obviously, volunteers are very important to our community and we appreciate our volunteer firefighters, first aiders, doing the job that they do as a part of our community. All right, here we go. You ready? Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Right side. Yet for a part, I say your name.
I'm Haley Alexis.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bring true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Savior.
To the Savior.
And to the government established.
And to the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Form all the duties.
Form all the duties.
Of firefighter.
Of firefighter.
For the township of Jefferson.
For the township of Jefferson.
For the best my ability.
For the best my ability.
So how they got. Awesome. Thank you, guys. Appreciate you coming up.
Next on the agenda, we have a couple comments. Please state or your name to the record. You can speak with whatever you want on it, no more than five minutes. Those more is all.
We need council president, vice president, mayor, administrator, all council members. My name is Jay Dunham. You spell out. Spell. Not right. I'm here conceiving this book to introduce quickly about an article that you made and we have seen. I want to take a platform to. A very good article. I brought my attention to a topic or theme, which is Camp Jefferson. I'm going to give you a piece of information I'd like to share with you. That. My clean book of our illustrious internet. Attorney, I forgot to be honest with you. So you probably know a little side of any guy. So the topic, as I mentioned, is Camp Jefferson. And it has to do with the petitioning or the consideration of thought about making it a historic preservation area, site, building, monuments, park, whatever. I'm not going to read this document that I handed to you because it's pretty self-identified work. But what I will point out to you is this. There are pros and cons to this. Some of the pros of it is you would probably be eligible to get grant money, which we all know, who are closely involved with Camp Jefferson, that needs some upgrade for the buildings. I'm not even going to get in love with the stuff underground, okay? Because that's a whole different matter, okay? That's just waiting to happen somewhere along the line. I know council president Vermont hand is well aware of the situation, that the ground situation up here. Also, there is a prestige factor to having a preservation building, area, district, whatever you want to call it, in your town. It does have some prestige, some recognition as preserving a historical item. Now let me tell you some of the cons to it that I've noticed. And I'm sure you all being more devoted to this than I am will see it as well. The downside is you will lose control, which disturbed me having been on this council up until last year. Once you lose control, you lose control. You're going to be governed by Morris County planning board. Any application, anything you want to do with that piece of property, you're going to have to submit to their approval. The Morris County Historical Commission, that commission meets generally once a month. It's made up of all volunteers. I don't know if your experience has been with volunteers, but sometimes volunteers could get crazy, especially with a farm. I'm in charge. You can't do that council. You can't do that Jefferson Township, okay? So that's another area you have to deal with. And then there's the New Jersey Historical Preservation Commission. If you notice, just these authorities all the way pull up to the Secretary of the Interior of the United States government. So everything you have to do would have to be approved by another layer of government. Everything. Now, I'm not against government. I was part of government, as you all know. I was involved in government for 14 years. I enjoyed it somewhat. But it's an experience. And unfortunately, sometimes the experience that you anticipate is going to happen, which is hopefully a pleasant one, doesn't actually work out. So my main thing is you do this, just recognize that you lose control. Now let me give you an example of how this town has lost control. The mayor and administrator has been working on a project in this town for two years now. And it's called Three Bridges, okay? Now, the town did its due diligence. The town did its engineering work. The town has come up with funding, even with some of the money coming from the county government, okay? Two years later, who do you think is holding up the cost? Another part of government. The DEP, correct? Let me start. We're waiting on somebody to move, probably, probably. I could be too sarcastic, but sarcastic. Probably moving this ticket paper from there to over here, okay? Now, maybe it's a little melodramatic, okay, but that's the way I see it, okay? The dais you sitting behind right now was built by a gentleman in town by the name of Leroy Stubb. You know, for him to do that, he had to get a special permit to work for government. It cost him $500. Jessica, you're aware of the procedure you have to have in order to work for government. You just don't walk in and say, "I'm a contractor here. Hire me." It doesn't work that way, okay? I asked the administrator about another project for him down the road. The administrator said, "Yes, oh, here we consider." I went to Leroy and he says, "Jay, I don't have the license anymore." I said, "Leroy, what the hell happened?" He says, "Well, you know, the work is sporadic. I didn't get some work for a year or two." Nobody's fault. It just passed the way it was. And I didn't feel like spending $500 for the application. So all I'm saying is that I've taken enough time, and I'm sure I'm exhausting my time, is before you make a decision, what I ask is, and it's a beautiful piece of property, I'm glad we bought it. Believe me, I'm glad we bought it. But I didn't see some other structures up there. But I'm clearly bought the property and I'm proud of the property. I think the property is being well-used. And I hope you are very prudent in your decision-making once you come to a conclusion, any decision as a body, and along with the mayor administrator, of what to do or not to do with that property. I also want to add though, that that prop, that the nonprofit that she, that's involved up there raising money, making this excellent. That is a great idea, okay? Because I'll be writing a check myself to the 501(c)(3), I think that's where they do this up there, I'll buy it to build myself initially. Thank you all for your questions.
I mean, we gave you an extra two and a half minutes because last week you weren't here. Last meeting you weren't here. You were on the agenda this morning, President.
Thank you.
I appreciate you.
So I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Robert Vanderford, V.A.N.G.D.R. of the local. Just want to say thank you to everyone that was involved with the national layout last night. It was great. The policeman serving the hot dogs, AJ's giving out the ice cream. It seemed to be quite a good crowd. The kids were having a great time and I think it definitely accomplished its purpose. So thank you for that. The other question I had was on Resolution 25238 for the purchase of a near green mower. I understand this is for roadside mowers. I know I've seen the one that we have attached to the front of the tractor. I don't know if it's still in operation or if this is a replacement. And I'm just wondering, like, has this already been ordered? What's the delivery time? Because probably in three or four weeks, the week you're going to stop growing anyway. And it is $280,000 wise at this point in the year. Just a thought and a reminder I'd ask, since I couldn't really garner much more information from this resolution.
I think it's a comment on, so this was discussed during the budget process. And obviously, at that point, you don't know the exact amount it's going to be. But there were quite a bit of items that were actually cut out of the budget from what was requested from the DPDW. And does the administrator have any, anything to add or?
Actually, this is a purchase from last year's capital budget. What the DPDW did, they went out and tested various mowers and we actually, this mower actually came on site and did some of the toning. We saw it cutting to see how it worked. We actually had our mower go into it. It's going to replace our existing John Bear that keeps breaking down, keeps costing us a lot of money. So this was a planned purchase and in regards to its availability is we should get it within the next couple of weeks. They had done a lot.
We were desperately in need of mowing because since the one broke down over a month ago.
Yeah, I noticed.
Hand-cutting, which is completely ineffective and this machine is built to do mowing. But the mower we have now is a tractor with an attachment put on it and it takes, do you see how violent this thing is when it runs? And the tractor, as you probably know, the frame is the actual engine housing transmission, that cracked. And it's completely out of service.
Part of the discussion during the budget process was that as you have erosion on the sides of the street, you have banks, I like to have a gold milne and welding, hitting rocks. So we talked about it hard, planning and you get the rocks are building up. And so that, especially with a new mower, wouldn't be, you hit a big boulder or rock that could expose in a heavy-duty rain, it really does a number on the blades, I suppose.
Well, and I also would just like to say I appreciate the fact that you don't just spray pesticide everywhere and, you know, kill the bugs and the butterflies and, you know. That's why Jefferson is so nice, right? Because things like that.
So we have, as you know, a large area to cover. Our mower is desperately needed. One is not quite honestly enough, but.
Right, okay.
We tried to work.
But I, just one more thing. I did research and, yeah, I mean, I'm in Sussex County a lot. They own a number of these machines and I see the work that they do because I'm happy to be traveling. I understand how, it's a pretty good machine, let's put it that way.
Okay.
I just want to have one question for administration. I don't want to come on an hour later. What's the lifespan of one of these things?
We'll get a useful, though, I thought, because of the candy. So I'm going to say we're not going to have a 15-year warranty. They probably are buying.
This is actually, you hope so, no? That's why it's a little more.
You can't, you can't, you can't count on you.
No, right. We tried our best. We have a great, we have a really awesome mechanic.
But even the operator will take the.
We try to keep one operator rated so that you're familiar with the machine and know the areas. Like Bob said, you can have the areas, no rock, and also the washout, and you don't hit holders. That's just, you know, the havoc on these things.
Donna Vanderford, V.A.N.D.E.R.L.O.B.G. The agenda tonight lacks a lot of dollars on there. So basically, the last couple of years, as I've been coming to meetings, meeting after meeting, I questioned and I used for the council to approve to spend thousands and thousands of dollars for goods and services from vendors without going out to bid. There are seven, just on tonight's agenda. Who's going to work? I think something that we moved from what I saw on my. I know you keep giving me answers. I still wonder why you use state contracts and I was looking for them to be sold on that for a while. It's been quite a while. Resolution 25239. So there are four different companies listed in this resolution. And I have to say, I've read it. I didn't read it. I must have read it, I don't know, five, six times. I'm confused. I have to follow this company name, that company name, this one changes this one, this one changes this one. It's, to me, it's confusing. It lacks transparency. And especially since it has a high dollar cost for it. It's $55,482.9. And it's confusing. It's not, you know, we're supposed to like look at the agenda and understand where the money is going and why. And that one is, that's a doozy, that one. And then on the consent agenda, which, as we know, consent means that the way it's supposed to work, the council has already discussed, all of the items on the consent agenda and have probably consented, like, oh, this is going to go on the agenda if the process is being followed properly and the council president is working along with the local administration to create the agenda. Because everything under the consent agenda gets voted on by just one vote. So I, I just hope that all of the council members receive all the current information that they need to help them make the decision on every single resolution that's underneath the consent agenda, that's something under there, to approve this evening and especially since the resolution is going to be voted on in one vote. It's important to make sure that you all are on the same page on that. And if you're not getting the background information before tonight's meeting, that's a problem. Because again, there's a lot of money being saved. On, on the consent agenda, Resolution 25248, where we're buying an electronic message center, I guess that's a sign or something. What is it for? Where is it going? And is it something that our town really needs right now to spend money on? $35,690. The, the resolution doesn't give enough information to the residents to read the agenda, to understand we're spending over $35,000 on this item for what and why? And do we really need it now? We've got that revaluation coming up. I know that we're doing that special bond or whatever it is. But again, that's costing us $300,000 a year for five years. And as a taxpayer, it gets to the point where it's like, enough is enough. We need to like tighten those purse strings and stop to spend the money on every little thing when something might fall. And my last question is on Resolution 25251. I understand that we had a police car that was totaled in a vehicle collision on February 15th, 2025. And we're now needing to buy a new one and it won't see $53,705.9. Don't we have insurance? Wouldn't insurance cover that if we had a car totaled in an accident? Would we have insurance on our vehicles? And if this was out of commission since February, what have we been doing for almost six months? What have we been using? What's been in place? But most importantly, insurance. Why wouldn't we? I mean, I would hope that all of our police cars all have insurance, that all of our county cars. So those are my questions. You're free to discuss it or, so that I can stay here and answer anything else and then have a conversation back and forth. But those are just the likes of the others.
Oh, would be helpful to the administration, obviously. But I, I think, I remember years ago, we had the resolution just regarding guardrails. Because at the time, we were realizing when it's about the driver's fault and damage to a guardrail, it costs a lot of money. And insurance companies of the driver elected, whether it's no fault or whatever. But with regard to the police vehicle, I'm sure that we, with some insurance involved in that, it wasn't just the, correct, just the military?
Yes, we got $39,000 worth of vehicle, of the total vehicle, which is brand-new. And we had a $1,000 deductible, so $40,000 sort of remainders coming out of other funds that we had and put in the new car.
If it's somebody else's fault, there, no fault, maybe they're after.
This was, this was a slip and slide, I call it, it was due to weather condition.
It wasn't the one on the team, but.
Yeah, that's what it's on, a lot of it.
And when we're down vehicles, they'll double up on other vehicles with four miles on those vehicles. So we, you know, we have a set fleet that, you know, goes out every day for, you drive around the town and you see police officers all over, you know, directing traffic in addition to regular patrol and whatnot. So we have a fleet to sustain our police department. And if we're down a vehicle, we've been down more than one vehicle at one time, you have to double up on, on other vehicles, which puts four miles an hour on that vehicle. You get less life, you get less life out of that vehicle.
The items in the, in the car, the car that is totally, items inside the car a lot of times, I mean, that, they should be transferred, right?
The radios typically can, but some of their stuff, like the phone organizer, I think, I think blacked out.
This is covering not only the vehicle, but any contents that got damaged in the accident.
So the $39,000 was, maybe the vehicle was 35 and the content.
No, the vehicle was brand-new.
I was saying, but all we got reimbursed for.
Plus $60,000.
All we got reimbursed for was 39. That's not just the car that's part of the contents. So it is 6930. So there's a $30,000 gap there.
Oh, so the vehicle was not 60,000, it was 63.
If you have to put all the contents in it, you'd be.
Well, this car was everybody. It's 53,750.
But otherwise, if it's another driver's fault, we pretty much get held.
In New Jersey, each pays the claim and then if the other, other insurance firm wants to subrogate, they go against the other, they fight it out amongst themselves. But our insurance company, I think, although everybody in New Jersey, their insurance pays their claims, their insurance pays their, I mean, they can fight it out there amongst themselves. We've got the deductible there.
Right, we do the law. Do you drive in these parts a lot? Appreciate the diamonds. Oh, yeah, I'm sure you. With regard to the signs, the last, I don't know, I say, at least four, five years, signs are always popping up during the budget process. Whether they're going to go at the health center, we're going to go, and we delay them or we cancel them. And this past year, I, we had two signs. We canceled the one that was going to go at medicine at the health center. And the one on Berkshire Valley Park, obviously, is probably the biggest traffic area in town. Whether they're going shopping or they're coming up for work or whatever. And that, how long have that sign been out functioning?
Probably the past two years. We haven't been able to.
All it does is the date and time.
So that's where the sign is going.
The sign for the Berkshire Valley Park, um, Berkshire Valley, right across from.
Is there any, any place that would just like the date and time and a nice sign? You guys just scrap it and you have no.
Yeah, there's no, we can't, the people don't have any of the, can't even.
Can't talk anything. The electronics are up to a date.
Commercials on TV will say certain banks, you know. Right, the date and time, what do you buy Columbia Bank or whatever. But this one has a little bit of a warranty with it, right?
Yes.
Right, but I also want to add that from February to April, all of this stuff, majority, I would guess, 75% of this stuff that's on this consent agenda is brought up and we grill every department and we spend hours and hours and hours on the budget, cutting and slashing and arguing. So none of this stuff should be a surprise to any of us because we kind of battled it out for three months. And it is something new that is. Um, not, and it, it is something new that is not on our budget, then the administration gives us quite a lengthy reasoning why things need to be bought or changed or upgraded. So, um, anything that's really put on here, from a police car to a sign to a lawnmower, everything went through the budget with us. And we see whole department heads and go through everything for months and hours, from February to April.
Because most will tell you, not everything gets through.
And, yeah. People that don't still like the end of the calendar. So, um, a lot of things, let me tell you, a lot of things get cut, because every, that, I just, you see how expensive a lawnmower is. You can't even imagine some other things that, uh, you know, the guys really would love to have, but unfortunately, you know, we, we really just can't justify them, so, um, a lot of things get cut.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I was just trying to be patient, at least my turn, but, but. A good point, you're over there, jumped right on me, that's basically, I was just gonna, I was just gonna comment, um, on the comment that was made, that, you know, there's a lot of time and effort that all of us have put in, you know, to sit down and analyze every, everything that was approved on, you know, for any purchase at all. And I just wanted to reiterate that, we, if, if the public thinks that we just sit up here and sign a blank check, then you're totally, you know, this is what I'm just saying, we, you know, our beliefs and we all pay taxes up here and we're all part of this town as well, and we care as much as anybody else. And, uh, and if we have questions, we grill the business administrator and, uh, and the mayor and, and our CFO and, and then we, we met six times, you know, to go over the budget. Seven, eight times, I, I didn't even know, I, I didn't see my family until like two months. Um, so I just, I just want to make sure it's clear, if somebody makes a comment, that we're not responsible or we're not, we're deciding things off, it's not the case, I'm sorry, thank you.
And, uh, signs are communication mechanisms and, well, being on the library, going to the library board meeting years ago, they had that old jalopy out there that was like a twenty-year-old sign, the numbers on, change, they'd want the number at a time and if it's cold or whatever. They, they got a new sign and they were all excited. And it broke down just a couple of months after the warranty of the sign. And they had to decide what they were gonna do. How, how are we dealing with this one, like, warranty or?
That's the library.
No, no, regarding with the new sign?
Yeah, it'll be a warranty with us, yes. So.
I guess it has one year. Is it one of these things that breaks down, that's designed to break down as soon as the warranty work comes out? Because it's super expensive, I mean, thirty-five thousand for a sign, I'm sure it's a lot more than the sign that it's, that it's replacing. And we're just thinking about the library, what they did, and keeping the sign for, I don't know, that's three, three and a half years and having to get a new sign, right?
And just in regards to, you know, bids and such, you know, we had, I appreciate Ms. Vanderpoel's concern about going out to co-op for bids, but, you know, we have a process that's given to us by the state of New Jersey. I'll say it once again, we follow all the laws in the state of New Jersey. It's just CFO and, and his administrator certified purchasing agent wanted to chime in as well. Um, there's a cost to going to bid. It doesn't, you know, it makes sense in, in some large item purchases, such as in construction, such as in paving, um, where we might be able to get a better price than what is on the co-op. And, you know, again, we don't just willy-nilly do this, we do our research. And there's been times when we've gone to bid and paid more than what was on the co-op. So, you know, we're all, again, as, as Councilman, uh, Haylisch said, you know, we're all taxpayers. I consider myself a fiscal conservative. I handle my own finances well, I have an outstanding credit rating. I, I, you know, I take a lot of pride in, in, in my own personal finances as I do with the town's finances. And, you know, we're gonna try to save what we can, but we also have a town to run. And people want services and those services do cost money. And unfortunately, in this day, it costs a lot of money. We just spent three point two million dollars on fire trucks, which by the way, was on a federal contract. And so, um, you know, while it makes sense in certain situations, the state gives us the ability to use co-ops and state contracts, which is already pre-bid items, which in a lot of cases, uh, allows for a smoother operation through our finance department. If we had to bid, everything that we purchase, I would need more staff to review bids, prepare bids. Um, there's, there's sure, surety bonds that have to be, that the vendors have to obtain, which adds a cost to the item. So, you know, the legal review, so there's a lot of mechanics that go into going out to bid. And there's a cost to that. And we have leaned out our staff here. I would need at least another full-time employee in the finance department. We did everything, not more, I'm just guessing at that. And certainly would need more staff and engineering to review bids, because we can barely keep up with bid work we're doing now with the small finance staff and engineering staff that we have. And it takes away from, from, you know, especially an engineer doing other things that need to be, that need to be accomplished in this town. So I appreciate Ms. Vanderpoel's comments, but we're using the tools that are given to us by the state of New Jersey for procurement. And we're following the law. So, um, you know, we want to save a dollar or two, and we'll do that the best we possibly can. So, um, if you want to add anything, or Bill, you want to add anything?
I think the national co-ops, when we go on national co-ops, there's particular regulations we have to file and there's a local public contract for all of our suppliers to actually advertise that we're gonna use this, uh, national contract. So we have to put that in the paper prior to our several, one of the contracts. So the public's aware that we're using the national contract.
Uh, yes, uh, there's a cost to going out to bid. In terms of staff time, as well as on the vendor, added cost to them. So what we try to do is take advantage of the purchasing co-op contracts that are already doing that and piggybacking onto their work, the same thing that we would be doing. We have a very good group of department heads. We rely on them. If they think the price in one of the purchasing groups are not good, they do recommend that we go to bid. We've done that a number of times, but these contracts, you're not always gonna get the best price, but you're getting a good, fair price and you're saving staff time and you're complying with the regulations. You can't just go through the local guy and say, hey, can you give me a truck for this much? Maybe they might say yes or not, but we are a member, we utilize state contract, the national contracts. We utilize about a half a dozen co-ops, Morris County Co-op, Somerset County Co-op, the, um, the ECNJ, which used to be a middlesex school co-op, the Hunteren Co-op, the Bergen County Co-op. So we're taking advantage of everything. So we may not be going to bid on these items, but somebody has already put together spec and we're just piggybacking on, onto those things. And with some of these things, we're able to get the, make a model that fits our needs best. Um, sometimes the mechanic ha, has a preference in terms of what might have a longevity that fits or is better to our repair schedule. So we're able to get those, if we go to bid for a truck at this, uh, you know, class and size, you may get a Chevy, you may get a Ford, et cetera, that meets those specifications. Sometimes by using these co-ops, we're able to get the ones that we may prefer. And the basic bid laws don't allow for that. So there's a lot that goes into this, you know, the department heads really do a lot of homework. Our purchasing, finance staff do a lot of homework into everything that you see is, you know, boiled down into a one-page resolution or two-page resolution. It's more than that that goes into it than what you're seeing now. And you're asking great questions, uh, as taxpayers to ask these things, to know that your dollars are well spent. So, you know, I welcome those questions and it's part of the process, but, you know, that's kind of, you know, what we do and how we break it down.
And unfortunately, we have, you know, we're stuck with using what the law allows us to use. And I'll give you, for instance, I got a mechanic down in Public Works who screams at me, screams at Bill, I can get this cheaper on Amazon. And you know what? He's right. We can't use Amazon. So we're stuck with, you know, a lot of times, purchasing things that, yeah, I know, I can go down the street and get cheaper. And we can't do that, or else we'd get named on an audit saying, hey, you didn't follow the purchasing laws. So yeah, it can be found cheaper, but the law doesn't allow us to just go out and buy things willy-nilly. There's rules, there's regulations and laws we have to follow. So I don't disagree, you know, that we can probably do things cheaper, but we're working within the laws and the rules that were set for us. They're not our guidelines, they're the state guidelines that we actually have to follow. So, and that was Bill's, to Bill's point, you know, when we have a fleet of, you know, right now, probably between all of our municipal vehicles, police, who, and they're all Fords. That means we have to keep, you know, one oil filter in stock instead of five different oil filters, just as an example. We don't have a Chevy, a Ford, a Chrysler and stuff. So we try to keep same brands so that we're not buying parts for all different brands. We do put thought into this as far as how we're buying, where we're buying from, to help save that dollar for the cost of the meat that's going down the road as well. So there is a lot of cost that goes into it. And we have a very conscientious staff. Um, like I said, you know, a mechanic screaming at us, I can get this cheaper on Amazon, I can get, you know, a lot cheaper on Amazon. And I, I want to say, I wish I could, you know, and sometimes, I hate to say it, but sometimes they'll buy it out of their own pocket and just get reimbursed, which is not following the laws. So, you know, because they don't want to waste our taxpayer money. So it is frustrating, I get it, but these are the rules that are set before us. And, you know, the, the council, we, we present a budget to council, you know, we're running about a thirty-three, thirty-four million dollar budget. That's, that's, you know, the council approves after it's all said and done. And these items that we're seeing are what we're spending. And some of these things are things that we haven't purchased for previous years, uh, for many reasons. But this is all stuff that's already been discussed and approved at open public meetings at, at some point. So this isn't just, you know, we picked it out, oh, well, I'm gonna go buy a new sign, that, that's not how it works. If something breaks down and we have to, you know, it's not something that was in a capital budget to an operating budget, like we have operating for maintenance and repair items, you know, that might be something. But that's captured in a, a line item of an operating budget. Some of the larger items over, what's the, what's the, for capital, five, five-year life span and servant health. Um, no, that's, that's capital item, most of the larger items that you see on, a lot of times on the agenda. So, but just want to clarify that we are following the laws and it is frustrating, uh, sometimes in dealing with procurement laws in New Jersey. Absolutely.
So CFO, Bill. So the Department of Community Affairs sent down a local government financial notice. The, the state oftentimes is trying to streamline or help the municipalities. So one of the things that they came up with was that, I, I think it's going into, at the end of the year, you don't have to spend all that money for advertising in papers anymore, you can do it on your own specific, uh, website. So that is a, and even when you advertise in the paper, you got a huge track of it for the auditors and it's all, it's all a record key, if you're gonna be a nightmare. So that might be one way with some of the new legislation, purchasing laws. Every once in a while, putting out a, a bid. And just because the bid might happen to come in higher than you get for a co-op, you're not obligated to take that big price. I mean, just every once in a while to keep everything flowing so that you can see what's going on, you know? You know, are there other things that the state is doing to try to help with the procurement process and?
Uh, not as much specific, you know, Governor Christie had this toolbox that helped streamline certain things when he was governor. Nothing that drastic lately. You know, your comment about the legal advertisement is not so much to streamline, it's just the fact that the state of New Jersey, you know, the largest, probably the largest newspaper, is no longer publishing tangible, um, print, you know, newspaper where you could look at it there other than in an online forum. So that was really more to address some of those issues for the towns that didn't have access to, like we have the Daily Record in our parks and, you know, uh, other towns have some smaller newspapers, et cetera. So that's that. And occasionally, yes, they, they do come up with some, but nothing drastic that, uh, really, you know, to streamline things from, uh, purchasing or procurement things. But as we, you know, as we go through the year, you know, especially, you know, the, you know, we get more information from the state on some of the, the new laws that have passed and, you know, we go forward and we try to implement and comply with, uh, whatever's been done in, in this new year, so.
Okay, the floor is open. A litany question. Okay.
That was a little.
I've heard a lot, I'm having to work that, do a little bit of work there. Okay, we'll, uh, we'll close the public portion and move to the next item, which is the ordinance, uh, twenty-five sixteen.
Yeah. Ordinance twenty-five dash sixteen, ordinance establishing salary ranges and benefits of Volkerford including thirty-five. adopted this ordinance, it will take effect after publication and passing of the other law. This is the closing.
Okay, the floor is open for, uh, ordinance establishing salary ranges, twenty-five sixteen, public comment. Okay? Close that question, let it move. You have a comment now?
Yeah, I mean, hold, hold in. All right. Y'all, it was on the, my hand, I'm just, it's been hurting my brain because we have to make. So I discussed the last name with you guys, that I've been trying to do the math. And I was listening to Council President Birmingham about the extra cap on top of the salary. And then we're supposed to redo the salary guide come January, since we're not paying for it yet.
After the, next, after the contract negotiation.
Right.
That could be anytime, the next, whenever. If, if it's settled, whenever the contract is settled.
Well, I went through the step down. And then I went through the budget, and I'm handing up the two and a half to the budget, twenty dollars. We are pretty much on point with everybody. So I, oh, sorry, you guys don't have copies. So what I did is I made the ordinance, I did the two thousand twenty-one, and then on the right side, I was trying to figure out, because I know, um, that President Birmingham really didn't like that ten percent. And I literally have lost sleep over this, because I've never had to do an ordinance before, and I know once you put it in, it's in.
No, it could change at any time with your discretion.
I know, I've tried to put my diligence and it just, um, I just like moving the budget. I like putting the maximum, like, only like two thousand over what the steps get. And in four years, there's six steps. So I'm not trying to say that you aren't not gonna get your salary, because they have plenty of wiggle room to garnish all, uh, the rest next, which I think is great, you wouldn't want to do that. But I don't like the extra on top. Can I explain that personally, because it's kind of a little? No, yes? And I only did a couple pages, because this is time-consuming, I'm trying to do it between, like. So that's why there's not, that's a full copy that you guys have. And since I know that we said yes to talk about it, and this is technically our workshop for it, this is where I am. I'm a little stuck, like I just, I just, I don't know, I don't know why it's not sitting there, I have to go, my gut. And every time it comes up, I just, I just get stomachache, but I didn't want to do it. Because it's something, is that serious? I don't know.
Well, that's a good suggestion, given that we called it last time, I suggest we go into executive session. Maybe table this, we may have an executive session, we can go back, we have, given what we've got, the executive session.
Well, that's true, because, um, Council is not in that. Yes. I mean, it goes back to January anyway, so it's not like, I don't think it's gonna be back to February. Okay, then I can finish it.
So?
No, we're going into executive session.
No, it's a nice, we don't have to name. Yes.
Oh, yes, that's fine.
We had a discussion in the executive session.
Can we go into executive session to accept the salary? Can we go into executive session to accept the salary?
Executive session is for attorney-client. There. Did you say that, like, the rest of it, or are you going?
One.
Okay.
She doesn't do it again.
Very good.
I would not do it again. I would like to see what's in the end.
Yeah, to the end of the session.
Do we need a motion to, we had a motion second on the floor.
Right.
Do we need a motion? Get ready to go.
Mr. Trump. Senator. Senator. Yes, President Sanders. Senator.
Yes. We have a a discussion with Lake Winona, and they're the attorney. And I think we maybe come up to the table, I guess.
Yeah, so click, um, the background, they provided all the special tools, Lake Winona, I just wanna know us. Yeah. Fire resolutions authorizing loans and giving EP the appropriate repairs. And I'm sworn in here tonight as the attorney for both of the Lake Association. What we have before us tonight for this rich discussion is actually entering into the law agreement, which requires the municipality to enter into the co-borrow agreement. And we're making a condition, also a separate agreement with just the Lake Association to help them protect the municipality. So for discussion tonight, just the background, so that you learn new, to understand the process. I'm just directly the expert in Lake Association, just in the state of New Jersey.
Yes, she is.
So any questions you have, she's your woman.
She's your woman. I don't, right up to that, my only thing was that the lakes want to know, that was like fifteen years ago and stuff.
Right, so for lakes want to know, they actually have done, they have borrowed money to rehabilitate their dam. The assessment, I think, was put into place in two thousand and fifteen, I think the project was done in two thousand and thirteen. This is a smaller project, less than a hundred thousand dollars, and it's to, we have the little little outline of the dam. Currently, Jefferson Township is doing an assessment for the large project that was completed in two thousand and thirteen. So an assessment was done, the township assessor at the time determined how to do that assessment. The property owners in Lake Swananoa. It's not a mandatory membership community for most of the people who live there. Some of the people who live there signed a declaration of covenants, so it's mandatory for them. So the township assessor came up with an assessment where he determined under the statute what properties benefited from the dam project. So Jefferson will have to do that again for this assessment. But if you, you know, rely on the previous assesses' report that was done as to what properties benefit, you know, it seems to make sense to me at least, that those would be the properties that would be assessed for this smaller one.
When was the big assessment scheduled to drop off?
I think it was seven more.
You don't have any?
Seven more years, yeah. Uh, yeah, it's about three hundred and one thousand dollars, and the last one is April of two thousand and thirty-two.
So will this very small one extend past that, or will it be?
It will, yeah, because it's under several appropriations statutes that it, that you have to do it separately. So it will be, you know, it will be a new one, it will probably be, it's a twenty-two percent loan, so it gets paid back. The clock starts on the first draw, so Swananoa will draw to pay for their engineering, final design. You know, complete the project, which again, for this one, it's a small project. And then, once it's completed, the process is that the loan will close, and then you'll have to come back to the council at that point, and it will be the township that does the assessment. They do, you all do an assessment ordinance, put that assessment in place on the properties that are benefited.
So it'll be a two-step process where the big assessment will come off in seven years. And this new one will come off thirteen years after that, I don't know.
Yes, exactly.
A small one will extend slightly past when the other one was sort of expiring.
Exactly.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions about the process, or want me to go into any further detail about the process of the loan? So just so you know, in two thousand and twenty-one, when the loan first opened, both of these lakes came to Jefferson, and Jefferson agreed by ordinance to be the co-op of the end of the loan. It just took the state a long time to appropriate, the loans were awarded to come from the gym. It took them three years to get it through appropriations. The reason's unknown to me, it sits in the dam loan fund, it doesn't have to start over.
Yeah, well.
So, so, you know, it's now we come back because Jefferson has to be co-signatory on the loan application itself. And then as a condition of that, as we saw, it's going to require that co-borrow agreement is offered. Any more questions on Swananoa, and then I'll go into Winona a little bit. Okay, so for Lake Winona, this is their, their first loan, so this is going to be their main dam rehabilitation project. So the loan for Lake Winona is four point seven million. And, you know, this has been an ongoing problem, this dam is a class one dam, being a high hazard dam, but it's been a difficult project because there are properties that are actually built on top of your dam here. So Frencha Perillo, John Ritchie, who was formerly with the DEP, is the engineer for Lake Winona. He originally put the application in for this amount of money based on the project at the time, what he felt would be necessary to do it. But in the meantime, and because it did take three years to appropriate the money, he has come up with some alternative engineering, is hoping the project can be done for less. But the only way to know what can be done is to actually do the engineering studies. So Winona is going to draw on this loan, and we'll get a painter engineer to do all of the studies, determine what the final design is. And then the final design application will be made to DEP dam safety. They will approve it, and at that point, then the project will be ready to go. The project will go to bid. The projects are run by the private lake associations, not by the township. I know for Swananoa, the township did get involved with some engineering assistance for the last one, but generally, it is the private lake association that, you know, puts it to bid, runs the project. And then again, will come back to Jefferson Township, once the project is completed, and able to do the assessment. For Winona, there are filed maps that determine what properties will be involved. It's a, it's called a reservation, that's what the developer said. So there's a distinct list of the people who will be affected by this. So it's not going to be like Swananoa, there's a determination, but still, the tax assessor will need a determination on, you know, what the properties are, how they're impacted with it. There's a difference between lakefront properties and off-site properties and when the assessment's been placed at that time.
Have you had any residents, and how does that work with you?
So if, the residents have been kept up, because particularly with Winona, it's been all, for such a long period of time, the residents have been, you know, kept up to date, and, you know, there's some publicity. So no, in the sense of, and by the way, Courtney Davis is the president of Winona, and she's sitting right here. So if you have any questions for her as well. But no, there's not, I think, you know, recently, and Courtney had mentioned this tonight, that, you know, because the dam is not in good shape, it's become difficult to insure it. So, you know, the residents are all aware of that additional cost, and there's been a lot of conversation around, you know, the necessity for getting the dam fixed. And as you may know, if you don't get the dam fixed, EP requires that you draw down the lake. So your options are fix the dam or drag the lake. So people generally don't want that because it impacts.
Have there been any correspondence from the DEP, like, warning that the dam should have to be breached, so that's?
Yes, there has been for many years. And actually, the engineer who's working on the design worked for DEP for many of those. Right, he's probably sent the letters originally, so.
I've been on them.
So, yeah, so it's, this has just been an, it's an unusual, you know, design challenge for engineers to do it. So, yes, they, they've been sending them for years, but they, they also knew that, number one, it was a difficult design. But number two, like, the whole reason this, this process is in place is because most lake associations can't afford to do these projects on their own. You know, most dam rehab projects cost, you know, a million to two million dollars, and, and very few lake associations have that come along.
The people who cost of the engineer, is that calculated within the four point?
Yeah, it's right, in the loan application, it is the engineering and any, you know, administrative costs, legal costs. All allocated, but it's predominantly construction.
Do you know what the cost of the engineering is? Is she gonna do that first before you go to the next case? Do you have any idea?
No, we don't, we don't know what the cost of that's going to be, because I think it's going to be a matter of, whatever the design is, there's a process of back and forth with dam safety, where they say, okay, we'll consider that, but you need to do a new hydraulic study to demonstrate to us if that's going to work. So there's some back and forth, that's why the engineering is not set forth.
Thank you. Swananoa was actually in twenty twelve, I guess, was it? I'm not sure that communication was that good with the residents in the association, because you were involved in, right?
I was.
And they actually had to have a meeting over at the high school auditorium. There's so many people were confused with getting different information. And that's when we had a newspaper that was actually keeping people on weekly basis, informed of things.
Right, and I, I think in, I think in that case, there were people who were objecting to the, to the assessment. You know, there were, there were some people who say, you know, you know, going back to the nineties, I believe it was, in order to qualify for one of the very first DEP loans, people had signed a declaration of covenants that said, we will become and stay members of this association. Only one hundred and twenty people out of the four hundred people who lived there did that. So there was some consternation among the people who didn't sign that to say, you know, why should I be assessed for this when I never agreed to be a member of that? But the dam safety statute also changed to say, you know, it, it shouldn't be a matter of who's willing to pay for the assessment. It should be a matter of what properties are benefited from the project itself. And so that was, you know, how, how Jefferson made the determination of who would be assessed.
So it's a lot more cohesive, it's easier for the residents to understand it now than it was.
Yes, yes.
Because there, we were trying to map out who's brothers away, who's benefiting more. And Swananoa had more roads leading into it, where Winona just basically has two roads in it, almost like Mike Rock, as a separate community where everybody's basically, you can live on the lake or you're involved with the association.
Well, in Winona, everybody is a member, it's mandatory that everyone's a member. And there was a filed map from the original developer that said, here are the people who are members of Lake Winona. So it was a lot more clear cut than it was for Swananoa. Swananoa had a filed map too, from the Ringling Corporation, that they didn't require membership of the people who live there. And that's good for Winona.
Yeah, I spoke with Courtney and Ryan in Winona last week at Lake, about this whole process. They've, you know, told me their situation regarding insurance. And I believe the state's helping us with some funding, correct?
No.
Yeah, okay.
No, and this is, if I may.
Sure.
I think to the point that I already have spoken about the lake becoming uninsurable over the last two years, so it was our two thousand and twenty-four and our two thousand and twenty-five policy had been drastically impacted. Our liability policy has been drastically impacted, and our dues are, it's required that every resident, like, you know, homeowner within the reservation pays dues. And our dues, the majority of the dues is determined now by the insurance. We went from about a seven thousand dollar policy for about ten years or so straight, and it then jumped to almost fifty thousand. So the issue is now hitting the pockets of the residents. So what this has done is, obviously, it's made it a more compounded issue for the community, but it's also helped us with the awareness. And we have sent out letters to our residents to inform them about what we're doing and the processes that we're taking. We use our Facebook site, and we also use our website to help encourage the transparency.
If you don't do something soon, the insurance premiums could get close to what you had an assessment will be, and you actually have something tangible rather than just insurance.
And that's, that's pretty much what we've been discussing, that, you know, this is viewed by most of our community members as it's a short-term aim, we need to get through the process to be able to correct the dam. We follow the process with the DEP to have our inspections. And when the inspections come back, it's no surprise, it's the same high hazard core quality dam. And it keeps repeating itself, and we continue to dish out money to support those inspections. And we need to bring this whole process to a close and rectify it. So I don't know, you know, we're, when we're talking about the insurance, ours comes due, I think it's mid-February, early March. I mean, we're, we're sitting there with bated breath because when we found out the increase, it was because our insurance policy provider had dropped us, given us thirty-day notice, and we had to find another provider. And we put it out to numerous companies, and we asked the community to help, help us source out an insurance company that would cover us. And we were basically put in a situation to pick the only one that would give us a policy. So.
Because of the lawyers in London, the lawyers in London, they'll pretty much insure anything, insure people can evil for quite a while. But, uh, but that's a really costly lawsuit.
I'm sure we've talked pretty many. And, and I think at this point in time, you know, our, our community is well aware that this process is underway. We will continue to, you know, evolve as far as what the updates are. But obviously, it's not sustainable for us. We're, you know, these are, these are families, and we have jumped, it was over a five hundred percent increase in our, you know, in our costs. It, it just has, has been a huge negative impact on our community members. And there were about two hundred and three properties.
It's about half the size of Swananoa then. Any questions?
I don't know what the dam would be for, wouldn't you?
Well, it's a world test, but I mean, I can't.
That's what I'm saying, like, we, you know, talk about what's happening, but we're.
A lot of these, a lot of these dams were, were pre-nineteen, you know, a lot of them, they didn't really survive seventy-five years. So that's kind of the hope, when they're hurt with the dam, some of them are. So the hope is they, they last through a long time. And Swananoa, they, they had to do a couple of light overtures with the D E P project. But they were, it's not for things going wrong, it's just like, you have a little level out, but sometimes you don't do that in a real project. You can do it later. It should last for at least a lot of lifetimes.
Just talking about the cost of insurance, the one, one from seven thousand fifty, I mean, that's, I feel like that's the world that we were living up here, with anything that we went to buy or purchase, or anything that, you know, four years ago, five years ago, that was, that was reasonable. You know, and then when you put it on paper, and people see that you spent blah, 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 they're like, why is this so much money? Because everything is.
It's like everything.
Everything's not really worth, so that's all.
Has the DEP done anything assessment where it would be a major storm that dumps eighteen inches or whatever downstream? If anybody would be, I know they did that with Swananoa, they did the check.
Yeah, that's the, part of the engineering is that the story has to clear. See if Eric can come over to this.
Oh, yeah.
P M P is the probable maximum precipitation. And they used to plan.
There's old models, they use VAS models and whatnot, that they, they basically can determine what, you know, based on the elevation of the dam, you know, how much.
um, you know, how much it's going to impact downstream. That all has to be calculated out in engineering. So.
And they used to do it based on what they called the hundred year storm.
Definitely.
They're getting the hundred year storm now every five years, every three years, you know. So so the regulations are regularly changed and updated to accommodate for that. You know, there were there were catastrophic disasters, dam dangers in the 1000s and the 1000s. Um, you know, and I think that they got real estate.
Sussex County, they were reaching the dam in the next one.
Yeah. Yeah, but that's Seneca. Yeah, Seneca really kept that for each, that's for each Tom Hocklight. So there's, there's, there's definitely been problems. There was no loss of life in those. Um, but obviously that's the goal of looking at safety is to make sure there's no loss of life. So the planning is is based on the downstream, uh, potential damage, even like a property, not on the actual condition of the dam. So even when it's fixed, it will still be considered as a cost of life on this dam. It will just be one that is now never made.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Is that in there? I make comments?
Can't do that.
We're gonna have another public study.
Here, guys.
You're getting ready to go with deeper.
He's on vacation.
I was on vacation this week, so I came back from the meeting.
Dedication.
I was able to, uh, build in a drop downing that I try to do every year in the NAR and FRS. So if we do that and help me, what a crazy show. There's a windwind, so that's why I'm in my more casual garb today. So I think we, uh, that's to, this to the five minutes, so I'll see if I can. We lost. All right, I'll hurry to that. I'll start the clock.
You can yield your time to anybody you want.
So, so I invited you in analysis, similar format that I've used in past years. This gives an overview of the expenditures for current fund, water, op, shore, which is our basic operating funds. And, you know, usually have some things on a watch list that is on one of the next pages. And then I have overtime analysis and then the revenue. So just hitting the highlights right now, we're right about on par with the current fund in terms of, uh, what the expenditures have been in the past couple of years. At the six month point, it's 50%. We're at about 54% right now. So we're kind of right on par with where we should be. Sometimes we have things that are front loaded that get paid early in the year and things that level out by year end. So we're good there. The water and sewer, which has been a little more difficult the last couple of years is in, uh, the numbers are showing a better trend right now. So that's good from the operating side. Um, even the water, the what we purchased from the county and water is even in a little better shape for the last couple of years. So that's good. I know we're doing some work on, but also hopefully we'll hear more information. So my watch list items is buildings and grounds, which is typically one of the ones that's more volatile. It wasn't too bad on June 30th, although I would tell you it has gotten worse. Uh, I was the first to the administrator, but in the last two weeks, we've had some issues with the water well or pumps related to this complex. So we probably had an extra $20,000 of expenditures that, you know, we typically don't have there. So.
Yeah, it was about $16,000.
Okay.
It was also a affordable one, you know.
So that that's one area that will be given and I am a little worse than last year. Snow budget is always another volatile one. The last couple of years, we were pretty good in the 40% range. And then this this year, we're, you know, we're 75% through the snow year. We're at about 83, 84% on our X and W and O. So where last year we were at 48, 38%. So we were a little better last year. This year, December.
And what's the snow bank?
Uh, it's on here. 426,000. So we added, I think around plus the 100,000 last year, I think. And additional monies there. So we keep trying to, like nickel and dime as often as we can each year. So wherever we have left over, I take 50% and around March, we do a resolution where you guys authorize the transfer from there into the snow trust. So I do 50% of that of what's left over. The other 50% kind of goes to surplus once the budget years.
You like one down instead of surplus, right?
Yeah, but it's easier. I don't, I don't mind if you don't run some member.
Or you add that you're not supposed to use.
Or slush fund.
Yeah, it's fun.
It's a snow.
Water's not going, right?
It's a snow, okay.
It's actually, they changed the name to the snowstorm recovery. So you can use the storm stand, like go to the metal steel. So they they changed that after. So overall, most of the things are in good shape. The overtime, one or two accounts, you know, are on the watch list, but not too bad. The other one that really concerns me is the revenues, which is the last page. You know, so right now we're behind the trend. Uh, fees and permits are down $33,000 from the prior year. UCC fees are down $20,000. Interest costs upon investment down $25,000 from last year at this point. Interest on investment is down $110,000. Uh, and sewer rents and water rents are up $180,000, $190,000. So that's the good thing. But we also appropriated more revenue last, last year of what we had. So there's going to be less going into surplus and, you know, you went against my recommendation to, uh, on what our, you know, amount of surplus we could use. So, you know, I'm worried that, you know, we're not going to hit all the revenue accounts and we're not going to regenerate the surplus that we had budgeted. So, you know, that's going to impact next year's budget. So that's the biggest concern I have. You know, the appropriation side, building grounds now is something I think we can deal with even if we have a tough December. Uh, or if there's, you know, some more unforeseen items like the water, uh, and the wells that happened recently. So, you know, that's, uh, in a nutshell, that's my my spin. What's the time?
I need to turn it off.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
No, just fuck it. This one. So are we, there's some money that we have, you know, whatever funding we want to borrow. Are we still getting focused on this?
Yeah, we're still getting comparable, uh, interest of what we were, you know, it does a lot.
A little low in that.
It does a lot as the Fed funds rate, uh, changes, but.
It's still good though. It's still good.
We're still doing okay. It's just that we did, you know, uh, appropriate extra $20,000 out of these interest on investments on top of what we did there.
Plus the Fed didn't cut interest rates, so I feel like they were negative. You ended up with a lot more, uh, investment interest money, close to $1 million.
Yep, yes.
$900 change.
So yeah, that's the high water mark. The other high water mark, what about like $60,000? And five years ago, we were getting $30, $40,000 a year on our, on our, uh, $25 million budget plus the money we take in counties or whatever. So, you know, it does, it does have a very, uh, I don't know what's saying. So when it's bad, it's bad. It's been good, uh, the last few years.
While you're here. Yeah, but we can't, we realize that we can't budget that because we've been very, like, in front of the eight wall for the last year and a half. It was getting greater. It come down like they were expected to. You look conservative, you weren't anticipating all this money continuing to roll in with higher interest rates. But while you're here, so looking at New Jersey natural gas, uh, Rockburn, Rockburn is handling the paving in Lake Paton. I was looking at the the bills list yesterday and one of the big payments to River was 300, well, 320,000. That was from New Jersey natural gas. Was there some of the account, it looks like more than 50% is going to be covered by New Jersey natural gas? Was there some monies that came in that are now being applied from New Jersey natural gas that wasn't anticipated? There was a budget process?
No.
We're reviewing capital. It's funny. We don't have any.
River views the amount that they need to pay, but I guess it's their first installment.
That's just for our, the roads.
That's for our.
And our township roads, they, River view is paid directly by, by New Jersey natural gas for the roads.
Rockburn.
The engine block that.
It's Rockburn. Rockburn is being paid by New Jersey natural gas.
Right.
So some of the money in the account shows that it's coming out of New Jersey natural gas that's going to River.
It's not money from New Jersey. It's what we're calling the New Jersey natural gas roads. Our township roads that have been, um, opened up and have the New Jersey natural gas lines put in there. So we're calling it New Jersey natural gas roads in terms of we're paving, but was disrupted by them. So it's not New Jersey natural gas money coming from them. They are paying, they're paying for their share directly to their contractor.
Some of the roads are going to be paved anyway, so it's been so long.
Yeah, I think that, you know, I think they're going to, they're trying to incorporate the schedules, uh, the paving schedules as they know, uh, the work, you know, they've been, the mayor knows that. You know, there's constant dialogue going on between administration and DPW on, you know, what the, their long explain.
Yes, so Rockburn was just in, they just did, uh, Espinon, Brady, they did Canal, Bowo, Swan. And a little portion of Weldon had to be re repaired, but and then they'll do all of Lake Forest. So that's all. We see no money through that. They go pass group. They hired a contractor. We work out the mileage. Jim works it out with them. They pave and we don't see any money. We're paving our portion of the roads that, um, that we probably normally pave anyway. But some of them happen to be gassing roads because we worked out this arrangement with New Jersey natural.
Now, while you're here, it's a dream to go back on vacation. Mrs. Garuda had brought up during the budget process, a something that you did years ago, financial, was it called Financial Strategic Plan? And you'd say at the time, obviously you were so, work 30 to midnight oil, you're doing the budget. But you had said that you could update that so that we can get that, uh, somehow they actually, the whole budget process is done. Put this, put the new numbers in.
Okay, what specifically in terms of our?
The way you actually did it a couple of, like, five years ago, Financial Strategic Plan.
Okay.
I forget what it was called.
Okay, yeah, then I've got a couple of different theories to that. So, you know, um.
So you can project where we will be five, six years from now.
Correct.
Based on when the note, when the interest is coming off, when, when.
Okay. Regardless of that, you know, there's the.
Capital.
Capital plan and then how.
You actually have to finance it.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think I know about what you're talking about. Thank you, Bill. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Thank you for.
Great job.
Yeah.
Okay. That's it for council meeting session. Administrator report to mayor and administrator.
It's been a busy two weeks in Jefferson. Uh, Rockburn, as Eric said, completed the milling, paving of Swan Lane, now crossing below Vista. Drive Espinon Road, where you did that small portion of Weldon. Everything doing out really good. Um, tree work on the schoolhouse was completed tomorrow, 8/7. Tree work will be happening on lower Weldon Road. If you're wondering that, what that is, that's going to be towards the lake.
That was called.
Uh, we've never heard it that called. Uh, referee will begin milling on Schoolhouse Road, um, on Monday, uh, on Friday, I'm sorry. And then Monday, Tuesday, dreaming work and Friday will happen on Schoolhouse Road. Uh, asphalt paving systems is in Lake Shawnee right now, sealing the first phase of the roads that were paved. They're anticipated to be done by Friday. All of this, of course, is what I'm committing. Dashboard report was sent out to the council yesterday. On Monday, Christine Williams from the Historic Society and myself met with a representative from the Historic Trust Fund along with Tom Connolly, who's with Connolly and Hickey, who's been our, I guess, our grant writers and things for these projects. Um, for the inspection with Historic Trust for our grant application. It went very well. Um, it's for our construction, the big documents are very close in the route. She'll be completing a report. Um, she gave us great feedback yesterday in an email about, you know, her inspection, how she liked it. The one thing that's interesting with the state Historic Trust, they have $10 million earmarked for them already. They have about $23 million worth of applications that came in this year. So they bring in evaluators from out of, out of New Jersey to come in and they'll be reviewing them on September 9th, between December 9th and the 11th. And the evaluators, um, from there will make their recommendations for awards. So once it comes to length, then full theory announcement if they have received money for this project. I will say it was a very favorable inspection. I think she got a lot out of it. I can't thank Christine Williams enough for her time and her knowledge. It was, it was well, it was a, a good, a good hour of, uh, a walkthrough. So hopefully we'll get some money for the changing. It would be great to get these big documents done and the construction documents together. For the, uh, police academy is going on this week up at the middle school. Um, it's been a very active week already. I think today they went to the police academy and the jails. I attended National Night Out last night. It was a beautiful night and good to see so many people out and about. Um, and just a couple of quick, I guess, events that the mayor had let me know from the last meeting was, um, there was a question regarding the stormwater grant, if we've applied for it. The township has and we got the money and that's going towards the GIS mapping of all stormwater in less than outfall structures. So we did get the grant for that and H2M, if you're familiar, we did a water contract with H2M to complete this work. So they're in the process of completing this project. So we did get the grant.
I'll just say that.
Um, Airbnb's were brought up and the list has currently has 15. We are doing more research. We have two more added as well, um, that we found. So let's just go ahead. And, um, I think one of them actually needed to get 13 men. So I think he, I think he came in action today.
Yes.
Um, a question was also asked about how much was spent on the fireworks for the carnival today? So we actually do a deposit every year for the fireworks. So we do a deposit of about $18,325. We do not. The fire company do. So fire company number two paid for that and we reimburse them. So they've been reimbursed from that. And then because of the late cancellation or working with the fireworks company, they had already gotten their rental truck. So there was another bill sent to fire company number two for $2,053, um, for those fees, which that doesn't go towards the deposit we had paid at and will reimburse the fire company for that. But as of right now, the deposit remains in place for next year's fireworks and I already gave them the dates, which are May 30th and we're dating them first. So and he's very nervous and jerky because it's the 250th anniversary of, uh, the United States. So, uh, he has a lot of demand.
You didn't lock in the price, probably just the deposit.
The deposit, I mean, the price will fluctuate depending on the tariffs that come into play. Hopefully they won't be the way they were saying they will be. So he'll give us a better update as we get toward the end of the year. And if we want to add anything more to the show because of it being the big 250th.
So out of the 32,000, it only cost about $2,000.
No.
The truck rental.
Yeah, it was, yeah. So, I mean, well, we paid the 18,000, right?
Yeah, but it's on hold.
Yeah, so they have the product, but we just paid that $2,000. Yes. That's it.
The other question that did come up was about, uh, is this a day or after pump that's opposed residents? They do.
They do.
Schedule as well.
They do every three years?
Yeah.
Unless they have a TWI coming that are subject to the DDP full size.
I want to look at though pumping, um, once a year on the lake.
I want to look at though, pumping, um, once a year on the lake, it's not expensive. Until we get to ours. It's two hundred and fifty dollars, but it could be five hundred dollars for a restaurant on the lake or a marina on the lake.
It goes by how many tanks you have. When I do a full pump that, it's nineteen hundred. We do it more than once a year, but it's in the past. So I don't think that's a problem, that they were doing it at least once a year.
Yeah, I mean, you would that.
We would know if they were.
Well, that's something we need to, we should look at.
Okay. I'm just saying, I think they're.
Thanks for my report, I just want to acknowledge the passing of some longtime residents who contributed a lot to our community. Gloria McCauskey, who also was on the fire department, or was involved in many different things, including the Historical Society in town. I attended her memorial service on Sunday at Hope Creek Presbyterian. Ken Hanson, who did the Lake Shawnee, was on our Board of Education. He was Lake Shawnee president for fifteen years and did quite a bit in and around the community. I attended his week service as well. And then Tom Klein, his father was the permanent works director here many years ago, he was involved in our seniors and so on. So I haven't heard anything about this arrangement as of yet. We got word today, Debbie and I ran Zoom, although I couldn't hear much of it, because I was next to a deep ceiling shift, watching a deep ceiling in Lake Shawnee today this morning. We got word that there's a culvert on Minnesota Road that has to be emergency repaired, county's going to take care of it. The pipe underneath the road collapsed, and they're worried about, they're going to need significant rains, they're going to overtop and bite the road out, so they want to get that fixed. They're going to start on Monday, so it'll take about three weeks, and they're going to have a alternating traffic signal there. So that's going on starting this week, I did put out a press release last week. As you know, I think last year, and I know Vincent Triciano came in and spoke to you as well, about the group that was formed with Picketini in charge, that was more or less a support group for Picketini to keep it alive and promote it as much as we can. Sadly, Picketini got news that they made cuts based on the Department of Defense budget, and their main mission there, and what they do, was indirect. Could be about a thousand employees that could be moved, possibly. There's been some news reports on it, you can read about it, all of our legislatures are on board, had a Zoom meeting last week on it. We're monitoring it to see what we can do, we're trying to get the whole New Jersey delegation on board. All of our, you know, congressional members, state legislatures and so on, up and down the state to, you know, really push for this because it just doesn't affect Picketini, it'll wind up affecting, you know, a lot of the other bases in New Jersey, which are all, you know, joint base down in the south and one other. So we're monitoring that, but, you know, not the news we wanted to hear, certainly, as we're trying to, you know, everybody knows somebody who works at Picketini, and certainly don't want to lose any jobs there. As Debbie mentioned, National Night Out was wonderful. I thought it was a little light, and then everybody told me we had extra playables this year. We got ready to go out last year, and again, we had already paid for them through FERC sort, we had the free service.
We had the poems on the petting zoo.
Yeah, all these petting zoos, you name it.
Petting cars, family.
So there was people spread everywhere, I, I just thought it was, looked light, but everybody was telling me, oh, they're doing it by, by playables. So, great job by the police department, and as well, junior police academy is going on this week, graduation on Friday, twelve o'clock. I know we're extending the invitation by Officer Fabian, I, I, I will be there.
What time is it?
Twelve o'clock. I was invited to the Berkshire Ridge Association picnic on Saturday, I have to meet that. Have to meet some people at the pool. As you know, Company One's went down, it's on August sixteenth, five o'clock, for the Saramoys, it's up to the beginning. And as we discussed during budget, one of Grace's new programs this year is a senior picnic. She has it scheduled for September third, starting at ten thirty, ten thirty to one, I believe. So obviously, you know, council's invited. And that is all I have for my report. Yes, I can't count up.
On Berkshire Ridge, I was in there yesterday, and somebody was asking about the roads, some of them are a little rough. That's all, that's their responsibility, right?
Yeah, they're, yeah, that's all.
I was going to say, if they're inviting me and they're about your roads.
No, I've invited in previous years, and I'm probably going to any community event, I think.
Okay, so, Council Vice President here.
The only thing I really got a thought on, just going to the, the National Night, last night, it's like everyone said, who knows everybody, police, fire, ambulance, Ed Mangle worked his butt off, he did a great job for that, put the eight hundred hot dogs.
A little over five.
What?
It was a little over five.
We had eight hundred, I bet.
Okay. Still, you did a good job.
So I say it was a little light.
Everybody had a great time. I mean, it's such a, such a great time, it was really, a little muggy, but nice. That's about it, I was away, so that's really all I got.
So you're looking at.
I'm like, what are you about to play?
I'm sure if you're going to that line, I don't know.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry I missed last meeting, I don't like missing any kind of commitment, but unfortunately I missed past council meeting, I apologize for that. Been a busy month. Unfortunately, I haven't been able to go to many community functions, but I've been to a couple of social events over the past few weeks. Some constituents, just, you know, they ask me, how's it going, six months in, yada, yada, yada. And we just have good conversations with the people, and they let me know their feelings about what's going on in town, share my opinions. And, you know, it's a good way to reach out for people as well, other than going to the, the, the community event, which you're there for another reason. But I'm hoping to make the, the junior police academy graduation, it's on my schedule, hopefully my, my schedule works out. Definitely going to be there for the wet down later on, August, August sixteenth. That's pretty much all about, thank you.
Counselor.
Yes, so Monday night, we had a land use board meeting, and that was three hours. We actually, they approved the last of the cannabis wars, and we are doing our final reading for the containers, and we're assigning the commercial signs on basically group twenty-three and group fifteen. And those will probably be back to us, because we go down all that stuff, in September. So you should be getting that, I think our meeting is about two weeks, and then I think we should be good enough to bring to us, and those will be ordered in this minute place. So we can have several meetings for it those. Let's see, we, we went, I went to the gala for the lake because that, over at the Stormwater, it was sold out, and they raised thousands and thousands of dollars for the lake, and for the boat that takes the kids out for education, so it's a really nice event there. We also lost another town resident, Pete Joyce. And I have to commend the police department, Pete was in preschool with me, Brian Seeley and them, they, the funeral was packed. They, the guys were wonderful and did traffic on the road. And then on Sunday, they did a bike, bike ride or a bike tour, rallied for him, and there had to be hundreds of bikes. It was just incredible, and we had a police officer in the front and a police officer in the back that kept everybody safe, all the way up to fifteen through Sparta. So it was really burning. It brought together, and I had said it with Don and Bob yesterday, is there were eighteen-year-old kids there to eighty-year-old parents there. And to see somebody that I grew up with in Jefferson, and was in high school with, touch that many different variety of people in Jefferson was, was really incredible. And who he was able, and the people that came back, it was, we hadn't seen some of these, some of my friends since high school, it was incredible. And it found me, as Eric said, everybody that he had chased when he was that first police officer.
Oh, yeah.
We were talking about that.
Joyce was a handful, I.
Yeah, they're all big motorcycle dirt bike guys, so, yes, they, you know, it was part of the mix. And, and excited for, you know, everything with Camp Jefferson. Like Jay said, we're getting together, we should be getting together our committee soon, and, you know, architectural plans, and there's a lot of decisions to be made there. But we do have cannabis money that we allotted for there, and I'm really excited to see.
Alcohol.
Oh, alcohol, sorry. Alcohol, they were more of the drugs.
One of the two vices.
It's just an exciting time to revamp there, keep history there, and we just do so many events there that it's, it's really an asset for the town. So I'm excited to see the vision that we're all going to bring together, because I know we're probably going to put a nice eclectic group of people in town to voice what we see for the future for the camp, so I think it's important. That's it.
Counselor Garuda.
I forgot about the Stormwater Gala, I never write down what I, I would do. I do have always a question, making a still series, I don't know how much trouble I'm going to start, I have good trouble though. So I know the police trading cards, when juniors did recharge, like, I think a hundred and twenty-five dollars per police officer responsible, because they get a thousand card. And I know some of the officers go through a lot of cards, and I know they're not donating anymore. We have thirty-six offices, right?
Thirty-six, thirty-seven.
So that's like forty-five hundred dollars. So I was thinking, if we can ask EDC to put something out, that way we can get the businesses in town to sponsor a card, because then their name gets on the bottom. I figured it's a win-win, you save some money, and then the, you know, they get a little bit more just through this name recognition by saying, you know, Jefferson area, whoever picks an officer on the bottom. But I don't know what kind of paperwork that runs in on your end, is that exciting enough, like a big effort or not?
Yeah.
I don't know.
It is.
All right.
We could certainly put it out there if anybody wants to sponsor, but to go to business to business.
Oh, no, no, just, I mean, when, when Kim held the meeting, there's always.
Yeah, we can put it out there, I'm happy to put it out if anybody wants to sponsor or.
Like, don't be crazy, like, don't, don't have them pick an officer, just whoever's cards are up next, just tell them, we'll put them on the list, and whoever, you know, pays a random, they can't, you know, like, when Trish picked you, just when you gave you a card one year, you can't wait for whoever, you just, you have to stick whoever's up. Because you have sixty guys. Yeah, but I just think it's supposed to, the resource officers go through a lot of cards, and I don't know how much we spend out of the year, and then alleviate the budget a little bit in the police department, go to the state office, and then I wanted to know, did you pick anybody for the municipal housing liaison? Because in my spare time, as I'm sitting there to people for my real job, my day job, I'd actually been sitting there with city town council meetings, and I stumbled across Little Falls, and they said that on their meeting, that the, this, they have to have. And I didn't look into like the rule, but I figured if they said that in.
Not familiar with that.
No, it's for the home.
I typically, I think, I typically handle, we have Jessica, I think, close to two.
Yeah, that's just the planner, but, yeah, so, I think there's a bunch of relationships with it.
Even, it's just because I heard it. And then Debbie, if you can, for the next meeting, do we possibly get a price on going to a meeting?
I've been working on it. No, Dave's been working on it, so, we had one price, we were checking into the company, making sure that we, like, the people are, who came back for the price, so, we're looking into it, people working on it.
I know, and then I know with all the computer problems, I'm sure he's busy on a regular basis, but, I am excited for the wet down. Does Company Two have a date for theirs?
They're up there, they're up like three times before Company One. Very expensive for them to do that.
I know.
Yeah, that's it. It's crazy.
I was just.
It's a lot, it's a lot of money, it's a lot of work, so they got to want to do it, so.
Oh, yeah, no, I know, I just wasn't sure if they didn't want to overlap with Company One or not.
No, sometimes they'll do them jointly, but I really haven't spoken to the chief of us why, or why not, or do we want?
And then you know me, I'm always thinking about Camp Jefferson, because I was up there on Monday night, we're going through the paths for winter stroll. All the millings that were doing all of these roads everywhere, can we possibly use those for any of the paths? Because I know they use the parking lots, but I don't know.
There's a lot, yeah.
I don't know if it gets to journey.
It's not bad, DEP requires you want to put the millings, I have to call on homework, come away by a week there, so.
That's why I definitely, unfortunately, I would love to, it's one of the things I'd go along and see. That's it, that's my date, so, or the rest of August, you know, we'll be back, right, before school, right? Are you going, so the kids start performing, oh, they start performing. No, I know, there are meetings, I was.
The day after our meeting.
Oh, good for them, all right, sorry, hold on.
Sorry, the teachers, teachers. Frank, you said about the paths, got a call this afternoon from Russ Felder, and talking to me about the trail and the paths and the building. He mentioned that they actually use crushed concrete, which seems like it might be a pretty good way of, and I guess, if, the way it's processed, after a couple of heavy-duty rains and stuff, it pretty much sticks, doesn't wash away like you might expect.
It's a good service to use trails.
But he, to frame him, that's why we do, it was an addition put on for the agenda, it's just a.
Correction, yeah.
For something that we voted on the last meeting, but.
Their consultant gave us the wrong figure, gave, gave the wrong figures on the resolutions, and we sat there correct.
I just wanted to, because it just went on to the agenda this afternoon, so, but it's, it's, it's the last resolution on the second agenda, and at the time we voted on it, it didn't cost the town any money, and a little bit of an increase in the twenty percent for the grant. And again, it's not going to cost us anything, and if we get the grant, it's great, if they get the grant, it's great for the town. And I guess he's close to, the county's close to finishing the first nine holes.
Here we are, that's our project.
And he said that the, the additional nine is going to be very, very tricky, with the lay of the land and the way.
That's part of that private donation through, that's our project.
Yeah, yeah, so, that's what that's about.
Yeah, it's great.
I, I didn't know about Ken Hanson, as the mayor mentioned it, I served with him for six years on the, on the board day, in the early nineties. That's when you'd actually have meetings and your lawyers wouldn't even be there. You would only, you would meet, the nine of you would meet, and once in a while when you had an issue, the attorney would be on speed dial. I'm just thinking how uncomplicated the world was that, and how easy it was to deal with meetings and deal with processes and the way things have changed so much, pretty well, but Kent was a fantastic guy. I knew, I knew him a couple of times after that, in Shawnee, where he lived, right?
Yep.
Basically his whole adult life, and I'm sad to hear that, he was a great, he also, he was the association president for a while.
Fifteen years, Lake Shawnee president.
How many years?
Fifteen.
Wow. So I think, I think nine years on the school board, I would move to about six, and I'm sad to hear that. Also, when, I know my funerals, I rather have weddings, but Gloria McCauskey, her funeral was very enlightening. I guess, I knew Joe and Gloria since we moved to town, basically, they were involved with Jefferson Day, and Joe was, I think, fifty years on the, as a volunteer with the fire department, and Gloria was the fire department first aid squad liaison.
Secretary of the border offices.
And I didn't realize this, but many, many, many years ago, they were here since, they were newlyweds, I guess, and she was actually worked in the Riker Library before the library was actually built across the apartment line here. A lot of volunteer work, garden club, historical society, just amazing lady. And I remember going to a couple of functions with her mother, and her mother had low gravity, and she, she looked to be a little over a hundred. You know, talking about, Gloria would say, do I have the same genes as my mom? Well, she really did, because she was, she was ninety-four, and, and Joe was fabulous, his, his victory garden at his house. And all the time, these people, but they were actually major, and I didn't, well, before I was in high school, when they did the two-hundredth anniversary of the town, I guess it was a really big function year in Jefferson, the town went all out in seventeen, seventeen, in nineteen seventy-six. And they were super involved with the bicentennial here in town, and basically the whole year of two thousand and four. Well, every month they had. Well, every month they had another activity and another event going on. Amazing, amazing. Joe and Gloria McCloskey were just amazing people. Okay, I went to the national night out a little bit later yesterday, but stayed for, I think, about forty minutes. And, um, very, very good. Anna Marie Aiello from AJ's, joking a little bit, but she gave out, they give out free ice cream. How many houses? Was it five hundred? I think it was just probably about close to that as far as the kids lining up for ice cream. I mean, uh, oh, it didn't, it didn't charge, just part of their, uh, AJ's country tone. But I actually remember back, she was like two or three in White Rock, they were neighbors, like two or three houses down. And the family said, we're gonna be opening up an ice cream parlor and in Jefferson, I think there's a need for it. And she was two, I guess, at the time. And now, uh, she's been running that successful business for so many years. And it really gave a lot back to the town, really.
I was paid for through, uh, the bank's hand lines.
Eighty-eight, hundred, um, probably four hundred dishes given out of ice cream last night. And I guess, uh, I guess that would be it. Do you have anything to add? Okay, so we'll move on to resolution twenty-five, two thirty-three, resolution authorizing payment of the bill.
Revolution. Second.
Any, any comments?
Revolution.
Hey. None, uh, mo, uh, roll call please.
Mrs. Gurudo.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mrs. Senator.
Yes, as President Keilish.
Yes.
President Berman.
Yes. Resolution twenty-five, two thirty-four, resolution of township council, township of Jefferson, County Morris, authorizing payment due habitat for humanity as per township extending plan. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Comment? Let's see, comment. Roll call please.
Mrs. Gurudo.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mrs. Senator.
Yes.
Vice President Keilish.
Yes.
President Berman.
Yes. Okay, next, revolution twenty-five, two thirty, resolution adopting a port of type deferred compensation plan for Jefferson Township, plan number nine, ninety-two, seven, four, oh, one, provided by Empower's hiring. Is there a motion? I just have a quick question. We have a, we have a deferred refinement plan now, but I was just gonna use a replacement.
No.
This is every year.
This, we have two deferred comp plans. This is the first one, uh, which was Great West, now Empower Retirement.
The name is different.
So, yeah, so the state basically has told us we had to do some housekeeping and we had to pass the resolution and, uh, update the agreement of a restated plan that, uh, the state had told Empower that we're, we need to update, uh, for compliance reasons. So it doesn't change anything with the plan. It's just more of a, you know, state, you know, keeping up to date with the latest regulations. Roll call please.
Mrs. Gurudo.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mrs. Senator.
Yes.
Vice President Keilish.
Yes.
President Berman.
Yes. Resolution twenty-five, two thirty-six, resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Morris County Historical Preservation Trust Fund for the Chamberlain House Construction Project.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Roll call please.
Mrs. Gurudo.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mrs. Senator.
Yes.
Vice President Keilish.
Yes.
President Berman.
Yes. Resolution twenty-five, two thirty-seven, resolution approving current estimate number one, Riverview Paving, Inc., for twenty twenty-five road paving program, contract number RDE twenty-five dash three. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Yeah, I just have a quick question. Um, this is probably, this is the first game if you get the process going, correct?
This is the first one. Yeah, they've done some.
Yeah, we've done really a whole lot, but they've mapped it out.
No, they did all the milling and paving, um, Robinory.
Oh, Robinory.
Yep, they did all the curb work, everything.
And this will also exceed money for other.
True, or best. Oh, sorry.
The total's like a little over a million, right? How much is a schoolhouse? Is that a third of that?
Um, yeah, I think.
Roll call please.
Mrs. Gurudo.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mrs. Senator.
Yes.
Vice President Keilish.
Yes.
President Berman.
Yes. Resolution twenty-five, two thirty-eight, resolution authorizing purchase of one Evergreen Elk communal mower with related equipment from Jetback Equipment LLC under Sourcewell National Service Cooperative. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or anything? Your roll call please.
Mrs. Gurudo.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mrs. Senator.
Yes.
Vice President Keilish.
Yes.
President Berman.
Yes. Resolution twenty-five, two thirty-eight, resolution authorizing contract for technology services with ocean computing opening for scale computer virtual desktop server environment improvement under the ONGMA Partners National Co-op Purchasing Cooperative. Is there a lot? It's two thirty-five. Is there a motion?
He said two thirty.
Thirty-nine.
Motion.
Position thirty-eight. I read the title.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. Second. Questions, uh, I'm just making real quick comments up. Um, in the past, things like this used to, uh, used to go into consent agenda. And we tried to condense the consent agenda a little bit so that we would address some of these bigger ticket items, uh, individually with all these information. Roll the information upfront, so you don't need to look at just a resolution and then hunt around in the back to try to figure out what it is. We tried to, uh, be more upfront with all the information on the, especially ticket items like this. It's a relatively new process to do. Okay. Roll call please.
Mrs. Gurudo.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mrs. Senator.
Yes.
Vice President Keilish.
Yes.
President Berman.
Yes. Resolution twenty-five, two forty, resolution authorizing contract to document scanning and storage services from File Bank, Inc., under the Keystone Purchasing Network Cooperative.
Motion.
Second. Questions? Roll call please.
Mrs. Gurudo.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mrs. Senator.
Yes.
Vice President Keilish.
Yes.
President Berman.
Yes. Next, we have no ordinances, but we do have the minutes from July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Councilman Schultz was asked. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Your main stand. Roll call please.
Mrs. Gurudo.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Actually.
Mrs. Senator.
Yes.
Vice President Keilish.
Yes.
President Berman.
Yes. Okay, there are no licenses. There's one, uh, additional appointment for fire company number two, Kelly Saxlow, uh, fire company number two. So that's the second member for tonight. That'll be, uh, okay. And along with that, we have the consent agenda resolutions from twenty-five, two forty-one through two fifty-three. Does anybody have any questions and need anything to move in that list?
Always maybe. We just called twenty-five, two forty-three.
Okay, so we'll, is anybody else? Is that it? So we'll move twenty-five, uh, two forty-one through two fifty-three, minus the two forty-two for separate discussion. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Roll call please.
Mrs. Gurudo.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mrs. Senator.
Yes.
Vice President Keilish.
Yes.
President Berman.
Yes. Next, we'll go to the resolution twenty-five, two forty-two, resolution authorizing the reduction of taxes due to Dusel County tax.
I don't have a problem with the taxes bill. I just wanted to know if updated, they wanted our initial letter from the board of Morris County. They wanted monthly updates. And I looked up their minutes for their last meeting, it was June nineteenth, and they just said they were in a discussion about Jefferson Township. But their minutes, that's all I said.
And they awarded the contract at the last meeting on July sixteenth, so I'm waiting to get the schedule when the, they also said.
Yeah, cause if you look at their minutes, it just said discuss.
Do we know how many total tax appeals were filed against Hanson?
I believe there were, um, I think there were about one or two. I don't know. But it was all, I talked to Ray about this actually, this resolution, cause I think there would be a question on it. And, you know, I remember our ratio has gone down, so it's at the lowest it is. So these were all very minor, you know, basically victories or whatever. They were, you know, the minor.
Eric. Any other questions, Senator? So twenty-five, two forty-two, is there a question?
No.
Sorry.
Mrs. Gurudo.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mrs. Senator.
Yes.
Vice President Keilish.
Yes.
President Berman.
Yeah.
Now, the floor is open for public comment. Please state the study names for the record. Each of these related to one comment, no more than five minutes.
Thomas Anderson, C A M V R, have this, I want to thank everyone for responding to my questions. We will, um, especially Mr. Egan, very thorough, very informative. I do not have questions to address the console because I think that you are just making decisions to spend our money without any thought about it. So if I came across that, like, I apologize. That is not mine. But I just, you're elected official, you stewards of the money. These agendas sometimes aren't clear, so questions will come up. And that's all it is. When Mr. Egan does his, um, financial, um, the budget report, it was really nice. Like, you guys all have papers in front of you.
It was really nice.
If we use these televisions, maybe we could see what you guys see. Cause just sitting there in the audience, it's kinda like, we have no idea what to follow. And you're all following something very far. So I just bring that up again. Um, as far as the tax appeals, I counted how many were on the agenda. There's twenty-five here. And, and the heading says that they were ones that the, um, the Morris County Board of Taxation, as well as the State Board of Taxation, had signed off on. There, from what I just heard from somebody sitting in the cabin, apparently there's more. But probably they didn't go in front of the Board of Taxation.
They didn't win.
Um, okay, so they didn't win. So there were other people that filed appeals. There is a lot, and maybe that's why, cause I never really got an answer as to why we're being ordered to have the revaluation, um, for Jefferson and was denied an extension. So, um, and the fact that when someone sells a house and the person who buys it in the very next year, when they get their taxes, if they paid, say, three hundred thousand dollars more than what the assessed value was, then the taxes are going up. That, I think that's where the red flags went up for, uh, Board of Taxation. That's my assumption, because I have not necessarily answered as to why we were ordered to do this. It wasn't just our turn, but it was our turn. I think the letter from the County Board of Taxation would have been worded differently. But never, uh, nonetheless, we have to do it. I just hope that we will be able to do it in a year, like from September to September. Because this company that we're using apparently is doing a whole lot of other towns all at the same time. And I have no idea, I can't imagine if they have the manpower to do all of Jefferson in the time that we're giving them. It's just a year from September to September thirtieth. So I just wanna make sure that Mrs. Gurudo keeps asking the questions because somebody just to make sure that we're on.
Floor is open?
It's in the key. I'm K W A T Y. It's mine, uh, but you did pass a resolution that was misread, it's not effective. Uh, so Paul showed me to be corrected it. Uh, it's, uh, resolution twenty-five, two thirty-five. It was announced that it was fan number ninety-two, seven, four, and it's ninety-two, seven, six. Play it. Just, uh, it's just mine.
You pay attention. That was the test. There you go.
You need to do it or you're all falling.
That was the res- it wasn't the resolution number.
I didn't know it made it there, so.
I don't even think you need to read all that stuff anyway, but. It's always unusual items. Item. He does. Floor is open? Now. See no one. Close the floor. And, uh, says executive session none, but we should modify that. I'll make a motion.
Wait, we have to redo it, especially, especially like how easy, how it, we have.
Um, the, there's a motion on for the executive session to, for attorney and attorney advice. The minutes of the executive session will be released upon conclusion of the matter. I anticipate that action will be reduced.
That was my motion. We get, do we get that a number? Your resolution for twenty-five, two fifty-four.
No, I made, I made a motion.
Okay, second? I'm a chief resident.
Okay, we'll just call twenty-five.
Well, she was just getting the clue. Yeah, he didn't have the number. All right, roll call please.
Mrs. Gurudo.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mrs. Senator.
Yes.
Vice President Keilish.
Yes.
Yes.
Whenever something hit them, it's the same thing.
Okay, well, that's kind of, it's an old one.
All right, let's make, I'm like, motion to get back to the floor. Second.
Okay, is there a motion? Okay. Come back. Yeah, local will come back in though.
Mrs. Burdo.
Yeah.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mrs. Senator.
Yes.
Vice President Keyless.
Yes.
President Berman.
Okay, is there, uh, motion for the order?
I'd like to make a motion to, is it two twenty-five, that, sixteen?
Sixteen. I second. Your local, please.
Mrs. Burdo.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yeah.
Mrs. Senator.
Yes.
Vice President Keyless.
Yes.
President Berman.
Yeah.